I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty and power which stands one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask Diana Colaw to administer the oath to her speaker.
All right, repeat after me. I, Victoria Handy.
I, Victoria Handy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, I would like to administer the oath of office to be raised.
I, Catherine Barbara Graves.
I, Catherine Barbara Graves.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of superintendent of schools.
The duties of superintendent of schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Now I can swear in the new board members. I call upon new board trustee January Kerr so that I can administer the oath of office. Raise your hand.
I, January Kerr.
I, January Kerr.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of board trustee of SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
Congratulations. I call upon new board trustee Alex Ferguson. Raise your hand.
I, Alex Ferguson.
I, Alex Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of board trustee of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
Board trustee of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
It's legal.
All right.
Now we'll have, can I have a nomination for president of the board of education?
Yes.
I'll second. Any other nominations? He just solemnly swears. Okay, tonight I have a show of hands. Diana. You were on the board. Education president from 2017 to 2018.
I, Diana Colaw.
I, Diana Colaw.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of board president of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
The duties of board president of the SAG-Harbor Union Free School District. Thank you. At this time, I would like to accept nominations for the position of vice president.
I'd like to nominate January Kerr for vice president.
Do we have a second? I'll second the nomination for Tommy John Giovanni. We have a second for the.
Second for January.
Second for January. We have two nominations for vice president.
And I'd like to respectfully decline the nomination at this time. Thank you, Governor. That was respectful.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? I felt all in favor of January Kerr being vice president. Are you opposed? Do you want me to administer the oath to her or show you? Okay, no, go ahead.
You're the district clerk.
I just do what they tell me.
Okay, I, January Kerr.
I, January Kerr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of board vice president of SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
The duties of board vice president of SAG-Harbor Union Free School District.
All right, I think that we are good with that part of tonight's meeting. And now I would like to move into the superintendent's report, which we are going to kick off with a wellness policy presentation. Want to say any words before?
Certainly. Remember that there's two parts to policy. Policy is the law of the school district. So that unlike New York State Department of Education laws and our commissioners' regulations, this is the law that governs our school. And we have it divided into two parts. There's the policy part, which is the first part, which becomes the law. And then there's the regulations that follow behind it. Regulations are sort of the scaffolding that holds it up and makes it firm. Should administrators come and go? Should teachers come and go? Should board members come and go? This holds firm. And it can always be reexamined and looked at. But the school board put this in front of the school district, the administrators, the faculty, the staff, and most importantly, the wellness committee, to look at this very firmly and take up. And we have two of our leading members that have looked at this. And they've examined it. They've given it their input. Then they put the work in front of the policy committee, who takes a much more clinical look at a policy. A very clinical look. And we spent, our last meeting was about four hours long and fueled by some delicious food, but a lot of difficult conversations. Because again, it's a very serious undertaking. And what you put into even the regulations, even though that regulation is different from policy. Policy is school law. But regulation, again, is your scaffolding. It's what holds it in place. Has to be looked at very seriously because it's going to be kind of your compass that guides SAG-Harbor School District and our wellness beliefs. So after we put that together, we sent it back out to all the stakeholders, had them give any other advice so that we could then deliver it here today to the school board. Because this was one of our goals for last year, was that we would have the policy rewritten. So two of our very instrumental leaders in the wellness policy are going to talk the board through. And of course, as the board knows, there's really three readings of a policy. So this is the initial reading. We'll come back to it again. And then we'll have a final read and an adoption of the policy.
Is this the second reading?
This is only your first read. This is your first time you're looking at it. So there can be ample discussion. You can, a board can even send it back to the policy committee if they want to. But I think you're going to see the work that they've done is really good thoughtful work. And it's very clinical work. I think the thoughtful 30,000 feet work was done by the wellness committee. We did the more clinical work. And now it's here for you to examine. So ladies, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and get started, although I don't think anyone would not know you.
Good evening and welcome. And we're honored to have our new board members and administrators joining us tonight. So thank you so much to all of you. I'm Corinne Olson, coordinator and teacher of science over in the elementary school.
Brittany Maridas, assistant principal of the middle school and also the chairperson for the nutrition and wellness committee. Corinne put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, I would say, into this wellness policy and been a driving force behind it in making sure that we're being innovative and really thoughtful, not just for the students, which is always our first focus, but also the school community as a whole. We know we've had a lot of hardship and also want to support our school community from down to our teachers, our office staff, to our parents and community members.
So there were a lot of reasonings that were instrumental on changing policy for the wellness document. And one main one was that the past document was mostly nutritionally based. And we know that the health and well-being of somebody is not just relied on what they're eating every day. So we wanted to bring a more rounded and more thoughtful document to our district. So it encompasses seven different dimensions of wellness. You'll be grateful that it is short and it's precise. But it is evolving and needs to constantly be revisited and looked at over its lifetime because our community changes as much as the document should.
So as Ms. Graves said, policy is law and it's set forth by the board. The policy of the document is the first part of your document that you have.
Put it up on the board for us to all have to painfully look through. But it is a very short part of the document and it's very thoughtful. It comes with a lot of state mandates. It comes with a lot of good reasoning behind it. Underneath each is the regulations and also the guidelines. Now, you may wonder why. But the regulations give us an opportunity to vary the document as time progresses and alter things that we need to do on a regular basis. And the document does not need to be voted on by board members every time a regulation is altered. There were several regulations that were difficult for the board, both the policy committee and the wellness committee. One being taking away the lunchroom recess for punishment of sorts, like, what do you call it? Lunch detention. We don't much have detentions in elementary school. But there is the lunchroom detention. And so it's thought about, well, perhaps the child that has this lunchroom detention actually needs to be out at recess. And that would benefit them more than the recess detention would. And so how else could we administer, you know, some kind of lessons for the punishments, action, reaction, things that really do need to guide our students? We have a moral cause, I believe, to establish the difference between right and wrong. And those children need that. So that's one thing that we wish that perhaps the board would consider looking over and helping us revise at some point. And there's another one, I think that we have.
Yes, the other one was in the regulations right now. It states that we would look into suicide prevention programs. That was a district goal as well, to make sure that we look at the social, emotional well-being of our students and what programs we can put in place to create a better sense of culture and community within our schools. And the example would be that they specifically put the Jason Foundation and other foundations or natural helpers and such. If you put a specific one, different grade cohorts, different types of feels that they have. Sometimes those handpicked programs aren't always great for every grade cohort or every school building. It's dependent on the culture and community that's in at the time. So we want to evolve with the kids that we have to make sure we're supporting them. So, that was our example.
So these are the seven dimensions of wellness. Emotional, environmental, intellectual, occupational, physical, spiritual, and social. So there's a new term. It's called spiritual but not religious, SBNR. And it actually is part of our world now. And I feel like this is a very important thing to bring forward because there will be those who are concerned that perhaps we're trying to teach religion in our wellness policy and that is not the case. Spirituality places an emphasis upon being the well-being of the mind, body, spirit. Activities such as Tai Chi, Reiki, and yoga are common with SBNR movement. To be religious conveys an institutional connotation to attend worship services, to say mass, to light Hanukkah candles. To be spiritual, in contrast, is a personal practice and a personal empowerment having to do with the deepest motivations of life. North Dakota State University appropriately wrote their definition of spirituality in their seven dimensions of wellness policy. The sense that life is meaningful and has a purpose. The ethics, values, and morals that guide us and give us meaning and direction to life. Spiritual wellness implies a search for meaning and purpose in human existence, leading you to strive for a state of harmony while working to balance your inner needs with the rest of the world. So higher educational institutions such as Ivy League schools as Harvard and Stanford have implemented these policies into their programs, not only into their educational programs, but also into their practices in their institutions themselves. And you can see, these are just a random group of communities and schools that I chose. But community colleges, all the way to the International Council of Active Aging, has adopted these seven stages or dimensions of wellness. And I really appreciate the span that that is. And it kind of shows you where the world is heading.
So before we gave you, when we presented the goal for the year, our update, right? We went over the different things and we did a whole entire inventory, K through 12, and also through our staff of what we provide, and broke it down because we wanted to make sure that we're supporting the whole child and the whole being and encompassing everything. So these are examples of physical wellness. The YMCA swim program that the elementary school does. Interscholastic sports, open gym. Homecoming Whaler Day, which is always a favorite in the high school. Intellectual wellness. This, of course, doesn't even encompass everything that we do because learning is a huge part of the school. Quiz Bowl, middle school orientation. The John Jermaine Library, our collaboration we've had with them. STEAM and STEM that we've been doing. Occupational wellness. Miss Motto in our college and career counselor has been working hard with college applications and college visits, down to visiting, visiting the morning program with different careers that we do. Those are all occupational wellness and how we support that. Environmental wellness. Environmental field trips, K through five, litter pickup. A good example would be the garden that we, the garden club and the garden that Ms. Olson provides for our school community that we love.
And the lavender that you got tonight. Breeze. Yes?
We've never smelled so good. Especially in a middle high school. Social wellness, pre-K buddies, multicultural night, the kindergarten show. And the fifth grade buddies actually came full circle this year. Our 10th graders wrote letters to our incoming sixth graders. Some of the incoming sixth graders might have lost the letters. But for the ones that didn't lose them, they did read them and it was pretty cool for them. And it was exciting for the 10th grade to write back to their pre-K buddy.
So.
Oh, emotional wellness, PPS, peer mediation. And then spiritual wellness, Tai Chi, brain breaks, which we started implementing and morning programs, specific song selection. We want to make sure that we're supporting our children. So, in conclusion.
Before I read you this, one reasoning that I would hope and ask for you to consider adopting this is that while we put all of these things into these seven categories, you may wonder why, and it seems like a lot of work and everything. But to be able to identify where we're lacking or where we're needing, where we're succeeding or excelling is now much more easily identified. And this, I think, will help us and our community over, hopefully, the years to continue to identify where our children are struggling, where our administrators or our teachers, anybody, is succeeding or needing help. So in conclusion, we're asking you, the board, to consider adopting the wellness policy and knowingly understand that the regulations and guidelines are offered as a support on how to educate and implement this policy. So thank you very much.
Can we ask questions now? You want to wait for the second reading to do that?
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you. This is, I know this took an enormous amount of work. And it is, I mean, and you kept the presentation brief. But the policy itself encompasses a much broader and holistic view of the child, which means it's a lot more work to actually be able to articulate that. So thank you so much on that. I have some questions that are practical nature because to me, I really like the policy. I think it's, like I said, I think it reflects the whole child. So two questions. One is, have we pressure tested our ability? And this gets back to a very small piece of it, which is the cafeteria. Have we pressure tested our ability to stay pretty much cost neutral on the cafeteria if we implement this? Or will this raise the costs and therefore, as a board, we have to reflect on whether we're going to have a greater funding of the cafeteria? So that's question one. And then question two, which is unrelated to that, is, once a new policy is adopted, is the next phase to take the new policy and then pressure test that against what we're currently doing to see where we may have gaps that might help drive some of the goals that we have in the coming year?
You want to take that?
Well, the second half at least, this policy is very, very similar to the original policy. You'll be surprised at the verbatim. It's like taken, so it's not, it's not going to change. We won't need a pressure test. We've already been doing it. So that would have been, this is actually a reflection off of that. So in my opinion, I don't believe we'll see any, any big changes with that.
So this won't change the food that we serve in the cafeteria?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think that we are, like Jennifer and I have discussed that we are going to work with our business administrative support to make sure that we don't even take freebies. Like, and we have done that, you know, where we get, and then at the end of the year, I walk through the cafeteria and suddenly have a little smiley face, you know, french fries, which we know are low saturated fat. But it's because the vendors give us free things. And, or we, you know, they come at a discount. So Jennifer and I have had a conversation, which we're going to share with our cafeteria, that it's almost like you do in your own home. If it's not on the shelf, it doesn't get eaten. So that we're going to make sure that our pantry and our larder only have healthy foods for our children because they are pressured so much to meet that quota. And their customer downstairs pressures them as well. That if they ever get a chance to have one of those lovely french fries with a happy face on them, they would like them back again. So they are really pressured by their customers downstairs to have those items. So we've decided that we're really going to use our business office and make sure that purchases that come through, none of those items are there. Which, they've had training in and they're wonderful people.
So I'm hearing is that there'll be no, there will be no impact on our P and L for our cafeteria?
You're not hearing that.
That was just my question.
You're not, what you're hearing is that we're going to try and deliver as best we can and not have those things available. It may have an impact on our bottom line, but we've pretty much been doing it. It's, we've broken, I'm going to be honest, we have broken our wellness policy downstairs because items come through. But.
But we're learning and we're growing. And this is something that is becoming so sociably acceptable and wanted so much that I think that it's easier now than ever to change and to adhere to it.
And our children do make unbelievably great choices.
We have a very healthy community.
We do have a very healthy community.
Anybody else?
I have a question, just a recess piece of it. Which I understand our existing policy is to not use recess as a disciplinary tool. But that practice seems to not happen in elementary schools. Violated quite frequently.
Well, we also have that happen in the middle high school with lunch detention.
Right.
It's not just the elementary school.
So, but anyway, so I guess one of the things I've heard, though, is, and I've been a very outspoken proponent on not using recess as disciplinary tool. But what are some of the things that can be explored? And some of the best practices that I've seen proposed from various groups, including the PTA and others, do include physical piece. And I noticed the language in the new policy was that no physical activity would be used as a disciplinary tool. And I guess I wonder if that's an item that's worth of board discussion a bit?
That's why we brought it up, yes.
Yeah, because to me, I know you and I, Diana, have had conversations with it and you're, have an issue with using the physical as a disciplinary tool where you feel that it makes physical look negative. And yet I come, well, you do too, from the sports side, where that's used regularly. And it's actually not a big deal. Military does it. And it's actually considered in best practices that, you know, have the kids run laps or do burpees or, you know, a number of other things. So I guess I wonder about that piece. And then also just what else will be in teachers' disposals and administrators' disposals? Because I would think that if I was them, I would still want something in my larder. You know, pun intended, to be able to help address issues.
Well, and that particular conversation was one of the more robust conversations in the policy committee because we were having that conversation about if, if you can't keep a kid in for recess and you can't have them, you know, do push-ups or sit-ups or something like that. Like, what is the appropriate discipline for behavior? And the policy committee felt like that was something that maybe needs to be talked about at the board level because we all had different ideas about what, what the answer is.
Because I know some teachers have kids clean their classrooms, for example. I know that happens in elementary. And we don't think that that makes kids think cleaning is bad. I mean, right?
They already think that.
So do I.
But anyway.
I think also on building level, it's dependent on building level too and what type of kids that you have as a whole. It's almost like a shared decision-making committee, not a district level, but between each building that that topic would come up. Just like the cell phone policy is always a hot topic in the middle school, especially with the sixth grade parents. This year, we got feedback from the town hall meeting from them. And then we changed just the sixth grade policy for them. And it went smoothly because we got feedback from the actual community and what was going on.
The other thing that was discussed at the policy committee meeting that they wanted to get feedback from the board at some point was because taking recess away, especially in middle school and actually in the elementary as well, is at what point would they fund like a later bus? So that they, it was a middle school teacher that was saying, "I don't want them coming at lunchtime with me, but I do have to have consequences. And I am so constrained by giving consequences. So if I had, if I could keep them after school," but often there may not be a parent to pick them up. So there could be twice a week, a later bus to take them home so that I have that time with them. Because, he said, "The time with me is not going to be considered punishment because they actually like coming in from the recess lunch with me. They know it's a consequence, but then I'm also taking away that activity time, which I know is really good for them." So that was one thing we wanted for the school district to consider is, do we ever want to consider a later bus? Not the late, later bus, but the.
Would other board members like to weigh in on this conversation before I make a motion?
Sure, just as long as the physical aspect doesn't get confused with athletics. I think for the basketball team to run laps may actually be good for them. You know, for basketball. I think that's, that's what you were saying as well. I like the idea.
What about the math teacher? What about the math teacher?
It helps getting you all to do the rain. So it's actually good for all teachers because X, physical activity is good for learning.
Right, well, if we adopt this, some of these goals, we just wouldn't want to get part of this goal for one part of our academics, you know, confused with another. Because it is appropriate for the team to pay the consequence of a bad game or something. And that's, that's, that's really. The, the elementary school portion, you know what? I found as a teacher that if you're able to keep students after school, that they, they actually like it. You get one-on-one with them. You get to talk to them. You get to get. to get, you know, ask them what is going on and why they're doing what they're doing. It's really a good quality time. It's a teachable moment. So, you know, I, I think that a later bus would be a good idea for disciplinary reasons, for lack of a better word.
Any other thoughts from the board?
Yes, anyone?
I just have one more question. The, and maybe my earlier question wasn't phrased right. What I'm hearing is that it has been in our policy not to use lunch detention as a punishment, to have detention during lunch, but we've been doing it anyway. So, once this is adopted, whatever version of it is, I think this is a great policy, but whatever version the board decides, are we then going to kind of check to see, what are we currently do, audit it, like, what are we currently doing and what are we not? Because if we've had it in our policy and we haven't been following it, it would just be good to know. Sometimes you adopt a policy and then you wonder why there may be some dissatisfaction, as it turns out you had the right policy, it just wasn't necessarily consistently implemented. So, that might be the next step.
Exactly. I'd like to bring these thought about kind of a shared decision-making committee kind of grappling with this and maybe coming forth to the board, you know, what are best practices and what do the teachers and administration think might make sense if, if there's some concerns about either using physical activity or keeping them in for recess, what the alternative is, and come to the board with maybe a recommendation for us to launch the next conversation?
And we have to have it on building level each year.
Yeah. Okay. Any objection to having, having shared decisions? Make a recommendation to the board on that front?
I think the only advantage is that, disadvantage is it might take longer, and this might be something where superintendent can talk to her cabinet and the administrators might be able to come back with something faster. I mean, I think it would have to be, it would have to go through that filter anyway, right? I mean, but unless you feel like there are others in the room that will have, be able to add additional knowledge, it would be helpful.
Well, I just, and, and, well, what I've heard, too, is that, at least in the elementary school, and this is just what I've heard, I don't know if it's true, but is that the teachers really like to be able to use the recess as a detention tool because they find it effective. So, if that's the case, then clearly, that's got to be part of the shared decision, or at least they've got to be pulled and they have to have an opportunity to weigh in in some way, shape, or form. Personally, I mean, I, look, I think the work is great, and the only issue I had, right, was limiting this, the physical exercise, because I think that's just such a, you know, piece of sport. It's, it's actually in the best practices. It's recommended nationwide, so I don't, I don't have a problem with that. And, and it's actually good for the kids, for example, who have ADHD and others that do need to move, and move minutes to get to the morning, so.
Would you be willing to provide the board with the research?
Yeah, it's actually in an article I wrote in the paper. Yeah, no, there's several different organizations that actually did work on this, and they have their recommendations, and there are these, it's a bunch of options.
That'd be great, and we'll provide that to the wellness committee as well.
I actually have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to know if the committee had looked at all into the option. I've been hearing about meditation as a form of discipline. Has the committee looked into that at all?
Not as discipline, but that's something that would certainly be enlightening for our, our board to research or to add to this.
We've been looking at it as a district goal in the sense of mindfulness. So, we've been looking into it on, at the middle school level. Mr. Natalie and Ms. Armist have been meeting weekly to discuss how we're implementing mindfulness and also restorative justice and how they go hand-in-hand. And they've been working on a curriculum all year long. Hopefully, to be implemented up to middle school year. It's robust, because you want to make sure that you're reaching out to all outlets before implementing.
And when we went to the Wellness Foundation, one of their keynote speakers is one of the leading researchers, and he's been working with a number of school districts right here on Long Island, and he actually likes to refer to as mind fitness, because they are using it as an alternative to, you know, the restorative justice, so that you work with the children, because much of, you know, what they're struggling with is how to manage the anxiety and how to manage their day. And so, that's mind fitness. It's getting them to, you know, bring themselves down and learning those techniques for bringing themselves down into a calmer state. Very interesting.
And being reflective in actually what they did and why they did it.
Right. We did do a presentation at this morning program to help educate, you know, the students and the teachers all at once, and practiced it several times, several different techniques, and feel like we're starting slowly, but this, I think the document, the wellness document prior to this was a very old document that was just kind of shuffled down under, you know, like it was just passed, because it, it just wasn't addressed. It was all about nutrition, and it just wasn't addressed. I do believe that because some parts of the policy are not being adhered to, doesn't mean that that will continue. I think once, now that it's been refreshed and people can be educated about it, I think we could start off with the new procedures and...
Okay, one question. The wellness gym offering as an alternative to gym, regular gym, as, is, okay, is probably the most fabulous thing I've ever seen in my life. Do you know if, what percentage of kids are gravitating towards signing up for that? And I, I don't mean to set anybody up. I just know that I have one child that when you throw a ball at him, he lets it drop, because he has no idea nor any inclination to catch it. And the wellness gym has got to be the greatest thing I've seen in a year. So, I was just wondering, and it's, yo, I don't know if you, it's an alternative to yoga, walking, I, it's a whole new world, so...
I can tell you that a lot of kids opt into it, as well as Mr. Nichols, but I don't have specific numbers on student ratio, on how many kids are taking it.
Are you referring to units of instruction?
You're talking about PE3.
No, the PE alternative.
Is it like there are stationary bikes and that kind of thing?
Nope. They do, well, they're doing yoga. They bring their own towels.
Mr. Grandma?
To address the specific issue we've got with the physical education stamp at the end of the year, I would say right now, and this is a very rough number, there's in grades, typically in grades from their sophomore year up, we do have, I would say, about 25% of the total population from 10th grade to 12th grade, we gravitate towards what we would call, alluded to as PE3. We really did meet with the staff, and we, we made it kind of a summer goal to designate each class, because we are small enough and we all know the makeup of each class, where students will be offered to the best that we can do, because you've got to remember, we are, we are constructed to stick to certain scheduling guidelines. But if and when someone could have the opportunity to take the PE3, which would be non-traditional, would be your bat-and-ball sports, you know, we would like to give the students that opportunity. But we're in the, we're in only the beginning stages of defining each class. We were thinking about offering three different opportunities. One, where you would have a PE3, which would be a more of a mindfulness, you know, yoga, meditation, stretching along that. And then we would have, like, a weight training one, which would be like a PE2, and then PE1 would be like your traditional, what do we call, sports and tactics.
Let me just weigh in. I'm a little out of the loop on some of this, Mr. Grandma.
Yes.
But the, one of the prime considerations also is how those three options fit within the context of a master schedule. Often, PE sections and what sections a student's able to enroll in are largely driven by their academic course selections. There's often not a lot of flexibility in terms of where they're placed. So, I think that, over the years, the PE3 option certainly makes sense, but what also makes sense is, within the context of a normal PE class, to not make 100% of the traditional sports and games, but to vary the units of instruction so that there are wellness activities and units of instruction embedded in a year-long course that kids get some variety. That's really a much more workable scenario than the three different options, especially when considered in, within the context of what students can access in our school.
That's a number of highly ranked practices.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, it's an absolute compliment. It's fabulous that you offered it. I think it is terrific that it's out there. I assumed it was growing. That's the only reason I, I brought it up, and my hat's off to you.
I just believe, I'll end with this, that Mr. Nichols and I are at the same velocity, that, you know, even though we can have concentrations uncertain, a well-rounded physical education curriculum is what we're really going to strive for. And the biggest hurdle is, the core academic subjects are going to build the base of most of the schedules.
Go to yoga, forget that.
Well, the other thing is that, to your, to, to Mr. Nichols' point, is that if it's embedded in the overall curriculum that every student is, is advantaged to, then, then students who would never have been exposed to those activities, which really are, some of them much more lifelong health activities, you know, I mean, I was a varsity softball player, but I got to tell you, it's really hard to find time to find a softball team to play with, you know? But yoga or other, you know, other activities like that is something that, you know, anytime, anywhere, someone could pretty much do that activity. So, I would really be an advocate for integrating it across the whole board, because I think every student could really be added by that.
I believe it is integrated at all levels. It starts in the elementary school with our swimming and our tennis, and it gravitates all the way up through seniors that, that take place. So, the, the steps are there. You know, we do give a well-rounded curriculum that is, also centers on lifelong...
Sorry, girls, I took the train off the track.
It's okay.
Any other questions about the policy itself? All right, I'd like to thank our presenters, and also thank the wellness committee and the policy committee for their work on this over the last couple of years. I think next on the agenda is the reminder that we do have a board retreat on July 24th at 6:00 p.m., and then we have goal-setting meetings on the 25th and 26th at 7:00 p.m.
I just have one more remark. I want to thank the board for allowing me to go to the New York State Department of Education retreat last week for two days. Commissioner was an angel to come, because she was tied up in Buffalo, having to make final remarks on a board concern they have there, but we were able to work with nine members, and it was remarkable. It was the best work we've ever had. Our New York State School Superintendent, president now, is from New York City, and she did a remarkable job facilitating. They literally had, it was like speed dating for all of your concerns about everything that's happening in New York State. They took 11 different concerns and placed them on every table, and they moved the New York State Department. There's only 40 of us that are representatives in New York State. I'm the co-chair for special education, and then there's the House of Delegates. So, they moved us from table to table, and we were able to voice our concerns for things that policies, changes, procedures that are happening directly to those that are in charge, in English-language learners, in building and construction facilities concerns, in the changes that they've made through the, the state testing. So, for example, that our children were sitting at the test for longer periods of time did not help us. And we were able to express our concerns, and when they talked to 40 of us, and 40 of us being from such different school districts, we're all singing off the same page and saying the same things over and over again, they really listened, and it was really beautiful to be able to express and be there at the table. And it was nice for SAG Harbor to be there at the table, because they kept saying, "Where are you from?" So, that was really extraordinary. And I, at one point, was sitting across the table from a gentleman from a very high-performing school district in Buffalo, and he looked across and said, "Toby Marafeld teaches at your school?" And he's from just this extraordinary school district, and he went to school with Mr. Marafeld, our, our language, Spanish teacher's husband. They went, they went to graduate school together. So, it was very interesting what a small world it was, and he was from Buffalo, and he was really being much rougher on the, the state educators. But it was really, thank you for that opportunity. It was a seven-hour drive there, seven-hour drive back, but it was really great to be at the table and to be able to voice our concerns. And I think that's sometimes how it's done. You know, students have a lot of experience with it, but sometimes you really have to get right there to make those changes at New York State Department of Education for our children. So, I want to thank you.
All right. Can we also just inform the public, our goal-setting meetings are open to the public? They're riveting, so we would love to see the public come if you can, please. And the board retreat, by the way, people here retreat and think we're going to, like, Boca Raton. It's held in this room.
All right. At this time, I'd like to move on to the agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve agenda items one through four?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve agenda item five through 14?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, sir.
Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve special education actions 15 and 16?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items 17 and 18?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I saw that we had posted the, the minutes in the last meetings, and I would just request that they get posted within 14 days going forward, because the law requires it, and we, that was done that this year. So, it's important to get them up as soon as possible.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve business items 19 through 38?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion?
Yes, for a matter of full disclosure, item number 21, one of the election inspectors is my aunt.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I would like to go in someone's suitcase to the trip to Costa Rica, number 37.
Got it. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a question on two separate items. One is item 30. I know the, the board got the information, but I thought it would be good just to highlight that, because it's a point of question before a lot of sports seasons, just that the, there is a formal process. Erica, do you want to spend like a minute on that?
Yes, I'll give it 30 seconds. Formal process is to clear a middle school player to play at the JV or varsity level. If they're determined to meet the standards set forth by the state, then they can participate at that level. The whole process is initiated by the coach. Usually, it's the varsity, the JV coach. They then approach me as the athletic director, and then we, I approach the parents and tell them that they were going to begin the process, and then the process is outlined in great detail in the packet that we give to the parents.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, my other questions were around 35 and 36, the window projects. I know, I believe they went, the bid is, the bid is over with the, I mean, the actual cost is what's over with the bid is. So, right?
The actual cost?
With the, with the original estimation. Is that what the...
No, we, we opened the bid on June 21st.
Right, so that's...
So, we had one, we only have one hitter, or two.
For 35 and 36?
It is within budget.
Okay. And 36 as well?
And 36 is within budget. That's actually a change order for the elementary window.
Okay, so that's within budget, it's just a change order?
Yes.
Okay, good. Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve authorizations 39 through 44?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I get a motion to approve bonding of personnel 45 through 48?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve board education action and policy 49?
Yeah, 49, I have some, just a note for, that it's, we had in, in the notes that it was for 17, 18, but it's actually for 16, 17. So, we just have to note that, have the district clerk note that. It's just a...
A typo.
Typo, right.
Okay.
Is the code of ethic, oh, I'm sorry, I have a question. I'll wait.
Yep. Where were we in the...
I didn't have a motion.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Sorry, cut you off.
No, that's what I needed. I need a second.
A second.
All right, any discussion?
Is the code of ethics the one that is posted on our Google Docs and on the website, as it were?
I would, yeah, I would assume so. I would look.
It would just, I mean, we didn't get it in the packet, I don't think, but I went on... online and looked at the website, but I just want to make sure that, because it wasn't attached to what we're voting on, that I know that what I'm voting.
Yeah, we haven't made any changes in it.
No, it has to be read adopted each year.
I'm sorry?
It has to be read adopted each year.
Okay, so it's the current one that's on the website we agreed to read out? Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 50 through 66?
Can you separate 50?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Action 50?
No. That's very sad. You couldn't do anything about that, Jeff. Did you try hard?
I just wanted to be happy.
I heard that at graduation. Okay, go back to it.
Can I get a motion to approve?
With Ray Gorash. So moved.
I'll second very, very, very reluctantly. Any discussion?
Yeah, can you get him back in to get his apple or whatever else cookie that he missed at the retirement party? Okay.
Yeah, I just want to thank him for his wonderful years of service. He wasn't, when we had the retirement ceremony here last month, the, each administrator had the ability and took nice advantage of just acknowledging those that were retiring. But Doug decided to wait till after that meeting, so I don't know if we, we didn't really have a chance to do that, but anyway.
I think it might be nice, just because he's been in the district so long, and he's actually taught generations of families here, and done so with talent and love. Do you want me to say a few words now, or do you want to wait for him to attend?
Why don't you drag him in?
Give us our chances on that.
I would drag him in here.
We could try. We could, we could have the video.
I said a few words, I mean, for those of you who don't know, Doug is a dear family friend. He's known as Uncle Doug to my children. So, you know, he's been here for four years, I believe, and it's probably the best story that, sort of, encapsulates, well, two stories. One, when I first met him, probably 20-some-odd years ago, I was at a party with my wife and his wife, and all the adults were mingling with each other, and you didn't know where Uncle Doug was, that's what you call him, Uncle Doug. And sure enough, all you had to do was find out where the children were, and he was in the middle of it, playing with them. He's just the kind of guy that he is. And the second story is that, this was probably about 10 years ago, he took my two children to the Fourth of July parade in South Hampton Village, and I got a call, actually got a knock on my door, and it was a South Hampton Village police officer, says, "I'm Mr. Nichols." And I said, "Yeah, what's wrong?" And they said, "Well, do you have two children, Olivia and Charlie?" I said, "Yeah." "Well, you need to come down to the village." So, I went down to South Hampton Village, and what had happened is he had my two children at arms, and he had tripped, and instead of, well, he essentially broke his ball in his face. I didn't want my children to get hurt, which is sort of symbolic of the way he acts, interacts with the big boys here, and that sort of captures the type of person he is. He will be a loss to the district, but I know that he wrestled with this decision for quite, for quite a long time, and I think it's a good decision for him and his family, and I think he'll, he'll come back, actually. He plans on being around and perhaps coaching, substituting, doing those kinds of things.
But, you know, we talk about emotional wellness, and he had, he had a classroom that was one of those places where kids felt really safe, and many, many kids would go there during lunch or academic support because they felt it was a safe place to be accepted and nurtured, and he really provided that. And so, on that alone, I want to thank him.
And I have to say, from experience, that's how he started his career. It's always kids down at the shop. I remember, we had metal shop and wood shop. Mr. Alawick was a teacher when I was here. He was a teacher here for seven administrations, presidential administrations. So, I've known Mr. Alawick for many, many, many years as well, and so, thank you. Safe place for kids.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to read.
Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 51 through 66?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on 66. Was the girls' soccer a shared sport, and we're pulling it back in?
Yes.
So, this is the first time, and we have enough to field teams? Or we're guessing?
We have enough to the best that we can predict that we're going to field a varsity or JV.
Any other discussion?
Just sad to see both Ms. Lontevia, is she leaving the district, or just?
Just a handwriting club.
So, that would just, that would just form one part of the session. So, she'll be back in that next year.
And then obviously, see Daniel Garvey, who was also a very dynamic teacher.
He did let me share a story, because I did get to see him, and his, I let his superintendent know that in the future, I was going to remember this. But he is, Dan is taking the place of the science teacher who taught him. So, this is very nostalgic. So, the person that inspired him in middle school to become a science teacher is the role that he's taking. But I told his superintendent, I know he had a role in this, and we're good friends, and that I was not going to forget. So, it's very, very nostalgic for Dan. This is a really, he's going back to his home, and he's going to be actually in the classroom where this gentleman taught him science. So, you can't, those are tough emotional triggers to work with.
Any other discussion?
I have a question about 59. Usually, when we, when we're appointing the summer school positions, we usually get a quick data pointer to about what the summer school looks like this year, because I know we bust some children out of the district for summer school and some stay, and so can we just get that highlight of what we're doing this summer?
This year, we had a larger number of students fail the checkpoint A exam for Spanish, which is the way our Spanish program works in middle school, is they can get a high school credit after taking Spanish 1B, which is in 7th grade. They take Spanish 1A with Mr. Stewart in 6th grade, and to support our children and our learners, because we saw that, obviously, we probably needed to implement something on a school-building level instead of sending them out, so that we can grant them the high school credit. We decided to have it in-house. It's about 14 hits.
Yeah, I think the real pertinent issue, in addition to what Ms. Maria said, is that typically when students fail a course, they can enroll in that course through the Hampton Bay Summer School, which is a regional summer school, but they don't offer Spanish. So, when we have a critical mass of students fail, and it's not offered at the regional summer school, we'll try to offer something here. So, in the past, we did that with Algebra II, and we're choosing to do it with Spanish this year. So, I'll say about that.
What other summer school we having in district?
The only other summer school at the middle school, high school level, is more of an enrichment activity running through the summer school, which is orchestra. But all other course offerings are through the regional summer school in Hampton Bay. And just a little background, the East End schools have all tried to run a satellite out here that's closer. We haven't been able to do so because we don't have the numbers to make it self-conscious.
And do we, are we sending, is this year, are we sending the typical average number of kids to Hampton Days, or are there shifts we've seen this year?
No.
So, it's typical.
Pretty consistent.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have one minor comment to Mr. Malone. Nice job on scoring Heidi Wilson as a full-time teacher in elementary school. That's a big score, and if the other people that you're bringing in there are as good as her, whoo, you guys are on a roll. Hello, my friend.
Take a bow.
Any other discussion?
Well, we've got to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Wait, can we pause for one? Also, we have in the audience Christopher Klein, I just want to welcome him also.
Thank you very much.
He is, his family's also here from the East End, too. His mother was a teacher on the East End, so we're really welcome. We're glad to have you in our elementary school. I think you'll be a wonderful addition. Thank you.
In the past, we have done like a little out-of-board meeting introduction reception for new staff. Will we do that later, if I can step?
I think we're going to need to, because I think we've got, we have a growing mass.
I know, we're going to have a lot of students, teachers.
Frank cookies, wellness policy. They make them gluten-free or something.
At this time, I'd like to move into a few items that we have for discussion. One is the later start. The reason I added this on the agenda is that I just have some concerns that if we're going to do some changes in the start time for fall, that we should give people as much time as possible to make whatever adjustments and get the news out, those sorts of things. So, I didn't want to wait to make the decision as a board in late August, as far as this was concerned. So, I guess I'll just open the floor, see if anybody has any motions or any discussion with respect to their thoughts on the later start.
I have some, I have a little bit of data, Diana, to hand.
I had asked a question earlier, I think I haven't seen it, but have we gotten a breakout of the survey? Last month, I asked for a breakout of the data.
They were able to break out, and they gave it to Scott, and he is away. But it wasn't very, it wasn't a third. They were able to just pull out the teacher only from the one option, and I don't have that at the ready for Scott.
Okay, so we'll see that when Scott gets back. We should see that next week, you think?
Yes.
Okay, good. It'd be good, it'd be very helpful to see that data.
Okay, so here's my question. What shift in the start time of the middle-high school only, I don't want to read all this, would not require additional buses, would not require combining kindergarteners with seniors on a bus, and would not require the elementary school moving at all? Is that 10 minutes?
15.
No, 15 moves.
In answer to that, none of the options, I believe, that Mr. Malone and I talked about, which were the 7:35, which is remaining the same, the 7:50, and the 8 o'clock were cost neutral, as you will, they were all with an associated cost. Or there was an associated cost, rather, attached to each of the lottery.
Okay, then go to the 15-minute one, I guess.
Yeah.
I thought if it moved 10 minutes, we were safe. And I understand that's not the goal. Trust me, I understand that's not the goal. But this one says Pearson shift 15 minutes later. Morning and afternoon bus runs, our own buses. It says small adjustment for elementary school. Five minutes?
The time goes on this summary page, it came at 5 minutes.
It's 5 minutes.
And what we currently have. And that was, that was spelled out, so that we could leave enough wiggle room to utilize our current fleet in the morning and the afternoon, and also still be able to, I think we said, a lot of some of the sports run, the special.
Okay, so what happens if it shifts 10 minutes only?
Yeah, I have it, I have it on my screen.
Can you stay at 8:30, 8:50, Matt?
So, this is up on the screen right now, do you see that, Ms. Stephanie? I was going to call you Ms. Bittis, I'll call you Stephanie. So, in this scenario, we thought that the morning and afternoon bus runs could be completed with our current fleet. Okay.
So, this one doesn't have a cost associated with it?
Correct. I was mistaken.
And the elementary would shift 5 minutes, that's what it, right?
And if you don't tell anybody, then everybody will be on time instead of late. Right? I don't know, the Bittis house runs like that.
So, the transportation, so the transportation impact, I guess, is minimal here in terms of cost.
Yeah, I think that, I think that concern rested with so much of the answer, the ones that we are, so, kind of show runs for the class, or the special education ones that we're going to have, because the schedules are now going to be that much tighter.
Can I, I just, I have always questioned from the get-go whether two or three additional buses was really going to be needed if we made a shift to 8 o'clock, given that we know how few kids from Pearson take the bus in the afternoon home, because so many of them are either going to sports, staying for clubs, staying for theater, walking into town for after-school jobs, walking over to the elementary school to pick up their siblings. So, I just, you know, I just wonder if there, if another way to look at that and see whether that's really the case, because I just don't, I'm not convinced that we need that many more buses to achieve a combined run. The other thing that is concerning to me is that the advantage to combining, and I think that this wasn't very well communicated, is that it would allow us to also have a late bus run, and that is something that came up in a discussion earlier tonight in terms of the advantages of a late, a later bus. So, I don't, you know, that's something that really wasn't, I think, well-articulated as an advantage to the community, and I know there are some parents and community members who are very concerned about combining younger kids and older kids, but there are plenty of districts that do it. Kay, you said you come from a district that did it, so that might be an issue of a culture shift. I think there might be ways and best practices to ensure that the kids are safe, because obviously, that's the number-one concern that everybody would have. So, I guess my question is whether there's a way to get us to 8, which, for the record, is still 30 minutes short of the recommendation, which we all know, but without needing two to three additional buses. And then also having both a combined run after school and then a late run, so that a lot of kids after clubs and activities might be able to take a late bus home.
So, just in response to your first question, which is whether or not the 8 o'clock would require the two or three additional buses, neither Mr. Malone or myself are transportation experts, so we posed that very question to our transportation director, saying, "Hey, is there a way that we can consolidate?" Because from what I understand, the ridership is not the same in the afternoon, so couldn't we seek some efficiencies there and cut this number down? And she gave us a pretty detailed explanation about the fact that she had to plan for the scenarios of the days when the ridership could be, you know, close to capacity, and that's, that's what she has to. That's how she establishes her routes. So, my suggestion is that if we're not confident with that analysis, that.
I actually asked her again on Friday, she was moving over again, and it was the same response, it was three buses, and a lot of it had to do with all the other ones that we do have that don't involve our students. We have a lot of private social runs and support runs, and she insists that we need three buses, three additional buses.
So, my last, my last comment was going to be that if we're not confident with that analysis, then I mentioned this several months ago, that there are probably consultants that do this, that go into districts and look at busing needs and resources, and will issue a report as to whether or not they can identify efficiencies that the district has not been able to identify.
And I wonder if, I think that's the reason I'm raising it, is I wonder if we should consider exploring that for a couple reasons. Not that our director of administration doesn't know what she's doing, I believe she does, but that this has been done in other school districts, and they have found solutions, and they have found ways, actually in some cases, to even save money by bringing in outside folks to take a fresh look at the roots. So, that would be something. And the other thing is, here's just another question, is that if we are planning, because I think every parent who's been here picking up their kids, which I did, I actually would park at the street where I would see the kids load onto the bus in the afternoon. onto the bus in the afternoon, and there, a lot of people talk about how we have a lot of empty buses running around town in the afternoon from Pearson. And so if we plan our buses for the days when the ridership is higher, but most days the ridership is low, is there another way to address that where we contract somebody to bring in extra buses on those times that is higher and not have, not own the buses? Or is that not a-
The contractor is not going to be doing that. They, we don't even want to support a one-time, they only have, they only have, they live in a town that is higher, they have, you know, also, and they do not operate, they just call them on their day basis, and we have really hard time for the local pay, and you know, contact.
You just, I mean, but you see, like, that we have a lot of basically empty buses going around.
It's a basic basis, but there's no real way to plan on what they do in the right bus, and what they do in the right class, and so it's there for all the students who are on school ride, if they choose to ride that day, if they have that.
There's another issue here, in that I know the municipality in which this school exists really would like our students on buses, rather than driving to school, there's, you know, there's that, and we've made overtures to work with the village to get kids on buses, and, you know, nothing official, of course, but to work toward that goal.
And a later start could help do that, because a lot of the reasons, a lot of families in this district who say that the reason they drive their kids to school is to buy their kids a couple minutes more sleep, because the buses do run and pick some kids up so incredibly early.
Especially in the winter.
Yeah. So, I mean, by going to a later start, that actually might help alleviate some of that issue. But again, that's not the issue in the morning, right? Because the morning would stay separate.
Diana.
Go ahead.
I just, I think we've studied this enough, the board has studied it enough, discussed it enough, heard from the community, I think it's time to make a decision, and I think it's July 5th, we should make a decision for the fall. My personal preference would be to move the time to 8 o'clock and to shorten the day, so it's the same dismissal time, and we don't impact the shared sports program. I understand that's not possible for the fall, because we need Tash to sign off on that, and so I think, given that circumstance for the fall, what's up on the board right now is the best option, by shifting it 15 minutes later, and that seems to have the minimal impact on everything else, and so that's what, I suggest that we do this for the fall, and then continue to look at a later start for the following year.
Yeah, I, I agree with you as well, and also, it seems like this needs to be something that's gonna be handled with the master schedule as well, as we've been looking, we see that there's 10 periods in the day, and maybe there's something, some sort of shuffling, something we can do with the master schedule in order to maintain the afternoon release time, so the buses won't be affected, sports times won't be affected, but this is something we would have to negotiate with Tash.
I think you should get rid of lunch and gym.
They don't need to eat at work.
Well, a lot of school districts do keep the kids in at recess, and they cut that half hour, and they put it into their, we've made that commitment to let the kids out, and I think it's a good decision, I think we should keep that. I teach at 7:20 in the morning, and I gotta tell you, it's not the best model, and, to my bosses who may be watching me here, no, but it, there really is a difference from students in the morning, and that, that's just my own personal anecdotal observations, I concur, we should definitely be moving our start time later, but we also need to be mindful of the students who participate in shared sports and other programs, you know, there are incredible benefits to those programs, and we need to make this happen.
Okay. But that's the problem, because we all agree, and we all agree, and we can't agree, because there's only, what's that famous line? God gives everyone 24 hours in a day, and what you choose to do with them defines who you are. We can't stretch anymore out of this. This seems like the, the least disruptive right now, it doesn't, I don't think unless it moves to 8:30, it does a darn bit of good. But 15 minutes on teachers' commutes, because I heard them loudly and clearly, and that's an issue to me as well. Is that really gonna matter? Are they just gonna keep coming when they're coming? I don't know the answer. Um, you know, I-
I think one thing that's interesting to note is that, I mean, obviously, look, nobody wants a bad commute for anybody, and I think that we all want, you know, teachers to have a fabulous working environment, and we also want to be healthy and do what's right for the kids. The commute that we're talking about, in terms of the shift, if it goes to 8, is not that different than what the elementary school teachers who are coming up island do now. Is it? I mean, it's not. So it, it's doable. Are things gonna change for people? Yes, things are gonna change for people, and sometimes I think change is hard, and that's, but in every other school district except one, there actually is now one on the record that switched and switched back, but every other one, people were thrilled, and even people who were opposed ended up being saying, oh my gosh, why didn't we do this sooner? And that, that's been seen in district after district. Again, I mean, I understand the interest to go at 7:50, that's really the best we can do, but I just think there's so many other issues that we're looking at. We just had a presentation on health and wellness, and about improving the seven dimensions of wellness, and we know the research behind why we would want to move later, and how that helps those kids' wellness. We know where we stand on substance abuse in this community, and we have Safe and Sag Harbor that works religiously on it, and meanwhile, here we have a potential solution with study after study behind it, that says that it helps bring down substance abuse, it brings down depression, it brings down suicide and suicide ideation, it actually even reduces eating disorders. I mean, we could continue here. So, I mean, I just think that we should get as absolutely as late as we can and show some rest up.
I think, I mean, I, I agree with everything that's been said, we all agree, and we all agree. And I, I do think that if, if we're looking at any change for fall, this one makes the most sense, because if we're going to bring in somebody to do an analysis of our transportation, that will take time. If we want to look at the master schedule, that will take time. If we want to think about shortening the day, that negotiation will take time. Those are all things that would require a lot more time, and I don't want another year to go by and have done nothing. So, I would like to make a motion that we adopt this option with the plan that we will continue to find that sweet spot where we can all get a little bit later, and, and maybe even get longer class time in shorter days, like, can we use our time more efficiently with transition time?
With that caveat, I would second that motion in a heartbeat, and I also just want to remind my colleagues that a little while ago, in a previous meeting, I promised that if we could get to 8, I would say another word for the rest of the year.
So now I have to listen to you.
And so now, that basically, by your agreeing to this option, you're saying to the board administrators and everybody that you want me to keep talking. So if that's the case, I'm seconding this motion, and you're continuing to hear from me with the caveat that we go later. But if you want to switch and shut me up, you can go to 8, and you've got an ear of my silence.
I do not want to shut you up.
I think you're making a terrible case.
So, it sounds like you guys have decided, which is-
We have to, we have to have discussion and vote, but-
Discussion and vote, I just want you to, I think, a couple of people have said that they've studied the facts and they're well aware of it, just know that with the 7:50 start, that, that will impact the shared sports program in terms of the time they arrive for practices, which I think is doable, it's just that they'll be late, and that the, because I am not in favor of releasing kids from academic support. That has been spoken about, but that's not something that I've ever agreed to, so I want to be clear with that. Of course, I'll do what you guys want me to do, I wouldn't recommend that, releasing them early. And then the second thing is the number of contests that would require students to miss a portion of academic support, or a ninth period would go up. But I think you're all aware of that in having already reviewed the data.
Well, can I ask that question? Because another alternative is to eliminate academic support, which is what a number of other schools have done. And you wanted to keep it, right?
Correct.
So, and everybody agreed they wanted to keep it.
Yes.
So, what I don't understand is why it's not a compromise, a good, fair compromise, to let students who are going to an authorized activity, such as to get to their sports on time, to leave, to leave early. In other words, you still have the period, and times where their practice, their sport, their practice, some of it, we learned when we did the research, that a lot of these practices actually start at 3:30, some at 4, some at 4:30, right? So those kids are not affected at all, but we're only talking about those few kids whose practice starts at 3:00 in another town. And that's something we heard loud and clear from the parents, definitely from the students, that matters to them, and so why, why can't we meet halfway, that those kids can leave early for unauthorized reasons? So it's not that you're making it, you know, it's not optional, it would still be mandated, and so, and you, I've actually heard from a couple of teachers that they would like to see fewer kids in academic support, that they think it would actually be more, more effective and worthwhile if they had fewer kids in there. So, maybe it's an advantage there?
Well, my experience is that prior to the implementation of academic support, the primary reason that our students weren't achieving at the level that I thought they could achieve was they weren't completing their work. So with the implementation of academic support, you saw that problem remediated to a great extent. You certainly could consider what you're suggesting. I would hate to make a policy decision that would put some kids at a disadvantage versus not having the access to instruction that their classmates would, and I would hate to make a blanket decision for, let's say, the seven or eight kids, or 10 kids, whatever it is, who participate on a sport, that, hey, if you play this sport, you all, on days, you know, you're all gonna be not able to access academic support. You know, the best-case scenario, I guess, would be that if, if it was an option for the students who wanted to go early, but then you'd have multiple bus runs to that shared sport, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but you can't do that. And, yeah.
Yeah, so that, those are some of the-
But we're always giving up, something's gotta give, however we slice it, right? And so currently, something is given now, and what's given now is that it's, we know it's not good for kids' brains, we know it's not good for the health and wellness for all the kids.
Yeah, you know what, Susan, I think everybody agrees with you, no one's disagreeing absolutely, but, listen to what you're saying, just like the keynote speaker at graduation, listen to what you don't like. If I listen to you, I get it. I would want everybody to start school at 8:30. There's fact, there's research, I agree with you 100%. But you're also saying that if you have a child that plays sports, that needs to leave this building at 2:30, to get on a bus to get to the soccer game on time, that it's okay for that child to miss a half an hour of academic support and do poorly in algebra? Do you see what you're saying?
I don't see that they're gonna do poorly.
But, but we, we know that we're taking away from, from academic instruction, and we're, we're kinda saying, you're not saying, we're saying, we, we want them to sleep later, we want them to come to school, but for those kids that play sports, ugh, well, we'll sacrifice a little.
Except that their sleep, that better sleep, also, there's a lot of these-
That 10 minutes in the morning is not gonna substitute the academic, but I, we're going, I'm sorry, and I, can you, I hear a motion on the floor to adopt the 7:50 start. Can we go a step further and say, with the, with a committee formed in place, would they drop dead date to evaluate the alternatives to change the school day?
For the following year?
Yes.
But we, we would still change for this fall to 7:50.
Correct.
All I'm, all I'm discussing with Jeff, though, is the issue of making sure that those kids can also get to their sports on time, because-
The bus is gonna leave and take the kids to go play the soccer, they leave now on, on game days, but they will be late, they will be late to practice.
They don't have to be if they're allowed to leave at the academic sport, or-
But, but if you let a child make that decision-
I think that this discussion-
Gotta go.
I hear, I hear the debates that's going back and forth, and I'm hearing that you guys have different positions on whether academics, whether the kids should be late or be dismissed early, right? So, I think that, I don't want to make an amendment to the motion to tie them together just yet, so, knowing that after this motion, they'll, we, we can have another discussion about, okay, now what do we do with shared sports? But I do know that, I think Brittany wanted to weigh in, and our superintendent wanted to weigh in.
And I did too.
Yeah, and all the board members still need to weigh in. So, before we start doing a lot of back and forth, I just want to give everybody a chance to be heard.
I'm good, don't worry about it.
You're good?
I, I really, I need to always respect, and I hope I've always modeled this for the last three years, is our professional educators that lead their building, and Jeff's been there over 20 years, and when 50% of our children right now in the 10th grade are going into the International Baccalaureate Program, and he's making a recommendation about what to do with the academic support, we really need to listen. It can't be, I heard from this person, I think we really need to, I take his recommendations, and he and I often, in private, will wrestle those, those philosophical discussions, but he's got the boots on the ground. And he has steered this middle school and high school in the right direction when we see 50% of our 10th graders going into an International Baccalaureate. When we first started, we were seeing five belching out of class of 80. So I think we're heading in the right direction, and we have to really respect academic support and, you know, not toss it around like it's a basketball we're trying to catch. It isn't. It's, it's a really pivotal piece of what makes Sag Harbor so successful, and yes, it could always be improved, but I, I just, I just don't want to see it something that we make a resolution on, or we look at so lightly. I think that's important. The other thing I want you to just weigh in on a big rock, is that we have a community that kind of got left behind in our rushing forward. I don't think they're feeling very listened to, so I just want, as trustees, for you to be very conscious of the fact that there's some community members that are, you know, calling and phone calling and visiting us, and they're, they're, they're feeling left behind on this, so I just want that to be part of your conversation, so.
What would you suggest, then, Katie?
I just want that to be part of your conversation. I don't have a suggestion.
You don't have a recommendation?
I don't. I have you as community members, you're moving forward, and I think you've heard them, and I just want you to have that as part of your repertoire, that, you know, that they, they're, they're worried, they're really worried, and maybe it's just educating, but that's part of it.
But Katie, I think that's a very valid point that you're making, and one of the things that we heard loud and clear was the importance of sports to, you know, many of these families and the kids, and, and how it would be very difficult for them if they're getting into practice late. So I, I get that this is, I mean, I, look, you know I have the utmost respect for you and everything you've done, and so it's not, that is not the issue here. I think that, I think it's fair that we can have a disagreement on how we get there without, you know, saying that anybody's not respecting anybody. So, but I think it's important that we do listen to that, because it's, it's doable for us to make a shift and still make sure the kids to get to their practices on time. I think that we're, we are, I think we are on thin ice if we make the shift and these kids who play their shared sports get screwed, and that's not okay.
Hang on, let's make sure we hear from everybody, go ahead, Tom.
Your, the academic eligibility policy for athletes and everyone else in, in, in the extracurriculars in the school, what's the grade point average that they need to maintain in order to participate in sports?
I believe it's, it's changed the policy, so now it's sent out from your office, Eric, and it's a 65 in one course, is that correct?
It's still a draft policy.
Yeah, but you've been, you've implemented it this past year.
Yeah, we've gone through the draft policy.
So 65, 65 in one course.
I'm sorry, are you talking about ineligible to participate in high school sports? Are you talking about-
Yes, and, and other extracurriculars, academic eligibility, if you fall below a certain grade point average, or, which is a fine line, because you want kids connected to, to activities and adults, and, you know, participating in the things that they love. I was wondering if this could come into play with this conversation a little bit? If the students' grades drop below a certain level, you know, then it would, this would kick in, and they would have to go to academic support.
Well, that's the way it currently runs with seniors, in that seniors have the privilege, if you will, of not attending academic support and having early release. We take that privilege away if they're suffering academically. You know, I think the key issue for me, going back to what Susan said, is- You know, I think the key issue for me, going back to what Susan said, is, I think it's a cost consideration. You could, if you made it optional for the students who did not want to go to academic support, bus those students to the shared sports. My reservation with that is, I wouldn't want, if you had seven or eight kids participating in a shared sport, and three kids wanted to opt out of academic support, and five wanted to remain for academic support, I wouldn't want to deprive those five students of the opportunity to go. You can address this by doing two bus runs. For those kids who want to go early, you know, at the conclusion of ninth period, you could bus them, and for those students who wanted to stay for academic support, you could bus them at the end of academic support. It's just, it's a cost consideration, I believe. And perhaps it isn't, perhaps we could ask that question of Maud.
January, anyone want to weigh in?
Also, I just want to ask, is that a 65 out of 100?
Yes.
I didn't create, obviously, it's still in the draft form, so I don't believe it's without the...
It's out of 100.
And also, I want to talk about logistics here. A couple of meetings ago, we had the board and we could see who was going to what sport and how many students would actually be impacted.
Yes.
If we're talking about taking the day to 2:51, and I don't have it in front of me, but wouldn't that only be like three students with shared sports would be impacted on getting to their sports late?
I have that, if you bear with me for one moment, I actually have that PowerPoint.
I just want to take it out of the theory and into the real world and see exactly how many students would be affected. If this is a...
To, it's currently constructed, the sports shuttle bus to East Hampton leaves at 2:47.
Right.
That arrives at East Hampton High School about a minute before 3 o'clock, at what time the day is scheduled. If this was to go into effect, the effect would be saying entirety of, I'll take the fall for example, our girls' swimming, our girls' tennis team, which we share with East Hampton, they essentially would be late to every practice.
Okay, so we are talking about large numbers here.
Well, we're going to, we're going to put the, I just shared it with Ms. Miurides so that you can see the actual numbers by season. You doing that right now, Ms. Miurides?
Here's a question, Eric. If you called Joe Voss, who's the athletic director in East Hampton, and said the Board of Education moved to a 7:50, and the girls and boys are going to be late to the East Hampton shared sports every single day, can he disqualify them from participating? I assume the answer is no.
I can't speak on behalf of another district or their administration.
Right.
I do believe we have a contract with them for shared sports services for the upcoming school year.
So there's your numbers.
No, it had the time start. It had the start times for the practices.
Is that middle and high school?
I can tell you what those are.
Okay.
Right off the bat, they are all three o'clock start times, I believe, Mr. Bramoff, with the exception of lacrosse at South Hampton, which is 4 o'clock.
Which is spring sport, not fall. You're looking at, we're looking at the first season out of the box.
As we move into the fall season, the sports that would be late for, football practice does still start at 3 o'clock, so any interest in some football would be slightly late. They did make the accommodation because of the triple combined, excuse me, the fourschool combined for lacrosse, for boys lacrosse, so they needed time, they said, we're going to run 3:30 for all of what we call a super team to get there. The East Hampton Sag Harbor championship, all to arrive from lacrosse. The standard start time for East Hampton is 3 o'clock, the standard start time for Pearson is 3 o'clock, the standard start time for South Hampton is 3 o'clock, with the exception of a few sports. Little may be another one where they have to get, they have to use the pool for the times that are dictated, and that could be earlier at times where we could miss the majority of the work.
Oh, but you're talking about the fall, right? Because there are a lot of sports in the winter and the spring that do not start at 3 o'clock, they start later.
Most, every sport that, standard start time for any sport that starts outside is 3 o'clock.
And even...
Except lacrosse.
Except for boys lacrosse.
Anyway, so in terms of the varsity JP and modified population in the school...
You want to, when she was...
Well, I just wanted to make sure January's time because we're trying to go around.
He answered my question.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that these times can't be modified, I'm just saying, as currently constructed, this is the way they are.
Well, you would have to go to an outside school to get them modified.
I would have to have meetings with the other athletic directors and their administration to see how we can make the best make this work. And they've been very, very...
Alex?
Yeah, just briefly, I think Mr. Nichols and Mr. Bramoff raised some really good points, and I think there's going to be challenges with any approach, and there's going to be downsides with any approach. To me, the biggest downside is doing nothing. When we have the American Academy of Pediatrics telling us that a start time earlier than 8:30 leads to greater risk of substance abuse, depression, decreased academic performance. And so to me, that's the, spending another year doing studies and looking into bus runs is not the best thing to do. And I think the best compromise for now is to move to 7:50, and by doing it today, we have enough time to work and see if there's a way to get those kids. Personally, I think the shared sports is really important to the school, and I'd like to see us do more. There's probably shared academic programs that we could get involved in in other schools, and so I think that's important. And I think that this is a good compromise to give time to have it implemented for the fall, and then we can spend the next year talking about, is there a way through shortening the day or other means that we can have our cake and eat it too, and move the start time to 8, or perhaps even later while keeping or even moving back the dismissal time. But I think we've studied it enough, and I think that the 15 minutes pushback is the best approach for now.
Chris?
I had a question about the previous slide that was up, please. This one. It looks like there's, what, 10, 29, 34 students in the fall in shared sports. Is that accurate here?
These numbers came from Mr. Bramoff's office.
Okay. And how many students do we have in our middle, high school in total?
500.
About 520.
Okay. So it's about 7%, 7 to 8%.
Well, I would say it probably, you shouldn't go 6 through 12, you should go 7 through 12 because those are the...
Oh, you're right. Like 2:30.
Take 70 off, 520 at 4:30.
Okay. So it's a large group but a small percentage, and every student matters. So I'm not trying to, trying to say that the shared sports doesn't matter, it absolutely does. And I worry about every stu, hey, I have a household of kids who play sports, so it's not, this is nothing personal for me. I look at it and think that we have, because this also does affect the sixth graders in terms of when they have to get to school. So we have over 500 students right now in our district coming in at a time where science tells us it is unhealthy. And, you know, we talked about math before. My kids had calc and pre calc first period. They're saying kids shouldn't be taking math at 7:30. They shouldn't be taking math at 7:30, and we, you know, and we schedule them because we have to, because of the confines of the district. So I really struggle with the idea that we are going to continue to advocate to do something unhealthy for over 500 of our students. Putting aside all the struggles and conflicts that I know exist, but science tells us, and we know this, we knew it last year, we knew it this year, with every passing month, more studies come out, the science proves this. So I struggle with advocating and supporting what is still science telling us is an unhealthy start time. But if that's the will of the board, then that's what we'll do. And then I would really advocate for a very different process next year because best practices of where this has gotten done in districts is not what we've done last year or this year. And there's a different way to try to find the right solution, and we didn't go down the best practice path. I would advocate for doing that if we're going to, if we're going to still come up short this year and hope that we can do something that's really meaningful next year.
Stephanie, anyone want to add?
No. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor is to adopt a 7:50 start, and taking into consideration that how we deal with shared sports is going to be another conversation for another night where we have some more information and some more data, but that's, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there type of thing. So any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Well, I had already seconded it, and you had said with the caveat that we would continue to try to move later. Yeah, thank you for the clarification, with the caveat that we spend some time looking at the master schedule, but this would be for the fall. Yep. Any other discussion on the floor? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't know which way to go.
You got to vote.
No, I'm not opposed.
So was it seven?
Six.
You're opposed, one opposed. All right. The next item on the agenda is board committee assignments. I did get some feedback from trustees as to what committees they wanted to serve on. We had talked about committees previously in the year, and there was a lot of agreement in the room that the administrators should be the chairs, that they wanted to continue their good work through the summer, and that committee members could be assigned for more than one year, these sorts of things. I'm going to ask that at the next business meeting, we have those revised charters with those recommendations provided to the board so that whatever those changes are to those charters, to adopt the changes that we had all kind of agreed on last year could be formalized. The other thing that I just wanted to bring before the board is, I hear in there about the ad hoc committees, wondering if we need to continue with those ad hoc committees. That's a board decision. So the, is it, oh, you know what, I'm looking at it and you're not. Yeah, 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 no.
And I have last year's as well, do you want that?
That's the same one, I think. Yeah, it's on the back.
Oh, it's on back, okay.
Yeah, all right. Want to pass it down, sorry. So the audit committee is a committee that we are required to have. Historically, we have had all board members on it, and we are not required to have all board members on it. So at this time, I think I leave that up to the board. I would like to make a motion that the audit committee consists of trustees that would like to serve on the audit committee, and it doesn't necessarily need to be every board member.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, the way that it has traditionally been in the district, I think this has been going on for a long time, is that everybody, and this is, this was said is best practice to have every board member be on the committee, but if you can't make the meeting, you don't go, and we have one, one or twice a year. So it doesn't put you in bad standing, but it gives every board member the option to attend if you're on the panel.
Any other discussions?
How many board members were we thinking about?
I would just, I was just thinking, if anybody wants to serve on the committee, they can, and that we wouldn't limit it. But we would have an issue, I'm just throwing this out, like, what if everybody said they didn't want to serve? Obviously, that's a problem, and it is a major piece of our fiduciary responsibility, but... It is. It was met once this year, and we get, and board members would still have access to the reports, correct? And it's still reviewed after the committee's board meetings, right? So, I mean, look, I seconded the motion, I am in agreement, however people want to figure out the details. One of the things that I did ask Victoria to look up, which I appreciate, is whether we had to have everybody on it or who had to be on it, and they said it could be all of the board, some of the board, or none of the board, but they did recommend that the people that serve on the committee have some familiarity with finances and that sort of thing.
Well, the audit committee is required by law, right?
Correct.
So board members are on audit, who's on it?
Committee members.
Community members. Right, but just so you know, the past three years, almost no one has signed up, and those that have signed up have almost never attended. We've had one or two community members show up the last three years.
We only had one meeting this year, and...
Right, but I'm just saying that it's not, shockingly, it's not a committee that a lot of people run to, you know...
But there were two community members, one is a former board member who do have fiscal experience, and they both came. There was another community member who, I guess, was appointed, but there was confusion, I guess, about the date or something.
I mean, this is, this is when our auditors come in and review our books and discuss best practices, how we're ranked, and what changes we should be making to how financially we're managed. So since, since one of our top three responsibilities is fiscal oversight of the district as a board, I can't imagine us saying, let's not have anyone be there, or let's not worry if any board member is there because we're the ones that can take action on that report. And I was just, I don't know of any district where you don't have many, many board members on this committee. I just have never heard of anyone saying, in a district saying, well, you don't have to be on.
Stephanie, January, does anyone want to weigh in?
Yeah, I would. As far as members of the audit committee, I mean, on the other side of the coin, it's kind of interesting to have community members to be on our audit committee, right? And to have the community audit us, and I understand what you're saying, and agree. And I don't think anybody's saying that no one from the board would be on this committee. I would certainly serve on the committee. But the question is, should all seven of us be on the committee? And I wonder if that actually keeps people at bay. In other words, we're all here, why bother? I don't know.
What do other districts do? Do most districts have all seven on the committee? Do you know that at all?
My former district did not have all, did not have all the members present, but had very, it was such a wonderful learning experience for community members who were very, now there was more fiscal struggles because we were more aid-dependent in my former districts. So there were community members that were very active and very interested in the aid ratios and the funding streams and the revenue streams, so they wanted that learning curve. So they wanted to be at the table.
We've never, in my seven years in the board, this will be my eighth year with committees, we've never turned away a community member that wanted to be on this committee. So like you said, there hasn't been like a long waiting list, and if we don't go, they get to come to the party. So, you know, we've always welcomed people signing up, and we hope we get more.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of not requiring all seven board members to serve on the audit committee?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So those of you who are interested in serving on the audit committee, just let me know, shoot me an email. The educational facilities planning committee is required, so is the nutrition policy is also required, I believe.
Well, we wrap a lot of things in, so there were some vestiges left over from even the 80s, like the AIDS is still lingering. So we had, used to have an AIDS advisory committee, and you have the safety committee. So some of the things that are required for, like facilities that we have, our building condition survey gets wrapped up into our facilities planning, and some of the wellness items get wrapped up into our nutrition, wellness, health, and safety. So those work very well for carrying those kind of heavy pieces by those committees. So technically, those are required, is what I'm letting you know.
Okay. Wall of honor is not, I would like to make the motion that we continue it. I don't know that we necessarily need to have a board member on it, but if anybody wants to, we'll take a look at that charter. I just want to, you know, we had raised this in a previous board meeting, to basically throw out the concept that Teresa Sammett and Sandy Kroll, who had both served the district for a very long time with distinction, have both, are both alumni, and were part in formation of this committee and whatever, and I know Teresa expressed interest in remaining. I know that one of the things we're trying to do is reduce the pressure on board members because I think a lot of people don't realize how much more beyond the two meetings a month commitment that this is. So I would like to throw out that if they are both willing to serve, that they continue to be the representatives and, you know, that's it. So the motion is that we don't have board members necessarily serve mandatory on this committee? No, exactly. And that they, and that they could be, you know, and I know Teresa said she'd be willing, I don't know about Sandy, you know, we'd have to ask her.
I don't know about Sandy, you know, we'd have to ask her. But, you know, I know, I do know that it is very important to both of them, and I think they have a perspective. I think the only other alumni now on this board is Tommy John, correct? None of the rest of us went to Pearson. So I think it would be really nice to keep them involved in the committee.
So I'll second that motion, but I'll also take it a step further, that if for some reason they don't want to serve on it, if community members and alumni want to serve on it, the board doesn't necessarily have to have a member serve on that committee.
Yes, I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'm seconding your
We're seconding each other.
Any discussion?
I think I'm
She made the motion. I second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So again, if there's any of those committees that you want to serve on, certainly let me know. And then the last two were ad hoc committees, the athletic committee and the communications committee. Let's start with the athletic committee. Ad hoc means temporary. Do we want to continue the athletic committee? Anybody want to make a motion on either way?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
One is, I think it'd be helpful to hear from the, from the heads of each of those committees, because they may have a feeling of whether it's helpful or not to continue. But previously, we've had years where we have waited to make the decisions about committees until after our goal setting, and the reason is because ultimately the goal-setting process might tee up what ad hoc committees you do or don't need. So besides the committees that are legally required, perhaps we want, because we have, our goal setting is just in a few weeks, we're not going to have committee meetings before then, that perhaps we want a table, let's see what comes out of the goal setting, and then have our committees reflect what the core work is going to be this year, if that makes sense.
It does.
We've done it in the past.
I'll second that.
Again?
I'll second that table.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to table whether the ad hoc committees will continue until after the goal setting. Any discussion?
I just want to throw out just another perspective on that, that I don't, and I do agree, Chris, I think it'd be helpful to hear from both of those committee chairs, and I know the communications committee chair is not here, but I think it would be helpful, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude us after the goal setting to start to form a new committee if needed, like earlier, a possible task force on figuring out later start, what the sticks was mentioned. So, but I don't think it precludes us from just having a little conversation about each of these now, and maybe, you know, I mean, Eric's here, maybe, I don't know, I mean, I've never, Stephanie would have more.
I can speak for Scott Fisher, who's on vacation, that, and Chris will as well, because we attended those meetings, that he feels that we can dissolve the communications committee.
I didn't attend them, I wasn't on the committee.
At this point. So he would, he would tell you that.
I'm going to renew and go back, that we table it and have a discussion on goals.
Sure.
My thing is
Before we resolve it.
If, you know, I don't know this, but, because I, we haven't, we haven't really gotten necessarily, I don't have a good pulse on, you know, the communications committee specifically was formed because in many meetings, including ones where the administrators and parents, for instance, in Pearson, we'd hear at those meetings that parents were frustrated over communications, and there were many outlets saying that. We certainly were blasted over social media for it. So that was instigated to really try to identify where the gaps are, and where opportunities to fill those gaps, so people of all different parts of our constituency thought that are communicated. So I think these conversations should be reflecting on, are we there yet? If we're not, do we think that's important for us to focus on? But they were started because we saw that there was a gap that needed to be filled, and until we really hear, understand what the gap was and has it been filled and is still important to fill, it's premature.
You also have zero attendance in some of these ad hoc committees, so they really need to be revamped if we're going to continue, because just to have them to have meetings, to have an administrator waste another night in a meeting, and a board member to show up and have absolutely no participation and attendance is
My brilliant.
Just a waste of it.
So the ad hoc committees have become somewhat permanent just to exist, to exist. Maybe moving forward to what you said, Chris, you know, figuring out the gaps, you know, the ad hoc committee should operate under the instru, more instruction from this board, you know, giving them specific goals, or, you know, maybe, who knows, academic support and shared sports, for instance, could be something for athletic committee. But we can table it and talk about it after the goals.
Alex, did you want to weigh in?
No, thank you.
Okay. So any other discussion on the motion to table this until after goal? All right, all those in favor of tabling it, and with the understanding that these two committees may be out?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, so I would just ask that the board let me know what they would like to serve on, what committees, I did hear from a few board members, and as soon as I hear from everybody, I will put together that list and send it out.
Sorry, Diana, question?
Yeah.
The liaisons, how do you want to handle that?
Same way. Just let me know if there's somewhere where you have a connection or an interest.
Well, does the board think that we should continue with doing this list of liaisons? Just checking.
Sounds like a motion.
I don't, I don't have a motion to change it, I'm just trying to have a discussion of do people, does the board think we, that these all make sense to go forward or not?
I don't at all. Because I've carried this around, this is our committee and liaison reports that are a portion of our agendas throughout the year, and, and it usually sounds like, no meeting, no meeting coming up, it canceled, it snowed, no meeting, we're reviewing the policy, and we're meeting next Thursday. So we might want to do away with, or have a bigger discussion on the liaisons, because I just think it puts another burden on board members to attend more meetings unnecessarily.
So what I'm hearing is a motion on the floor that we could dissolve the liaison assignments for the board.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Some, some conversation around this is, what school boards do is, for example, the PTA, the elementary and the middle school, high school, they ask at the start of the year to have a representative from the PTA and the PTSA to be the board liaisons coming to our meetings to report out what's happening. So rather than all of you going to their meetings, they come to the meetings to do a report out, and if they have something that's coming up that they feel they need an administrator or a board member to be present, they invite you to their very specific meeting.
But we
So at least, at least for those two items, that may be something that the board or the superintendent could approach them, and to reverse this, right? So that's
That's brilliant. Really, that is brilliant.
But you It may work for both. It was that way. When I was president of the PT, PTSA, I came here, I went to every meeting, but I was on an agenda, which was once a month, and I was asked to stand up and do a report, and I did. That remained of the agenda, but as time went on, those people didn't show up. And I don't know why, I don't know if that's why they were liaisons, or they were always liaisons, and they just never came to our meetings when we held them, when I was the PTSA. So I think it's something offline, we want to see if they're willing to do it, but just overall, I don't think they're all in one bucket. For an example, Mash Park, it's in their charter that they need to have a school board member on their board. So I think that requires a conversation if we want to dissolve that. For the Village, I think considering some of the issues we faced, like the issue about parking, it's helpful to have a liaison, because we want to have that conduit. So I would, I teed up the question, not because I thought they should all be dissolved, but we should look at them and ask the question for each one. So again, maybe that comes out of our goal-setting meeting of saying, are there, because there may be other liaisons that relate to goals, that we say this should come off, but something else be added. So perhaps we should reflect, you know, after the goal setting.
So I didn't hear a second for the motion to
I'll second the table to, after the goal setting.
No, hers was to dissolve it all, that was what's on the table.
Right, and there wasn't a second on that.
To dissolve them all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so before I end up in the Sag Harbor Express, dissolve? I would dissolve the way they exist, yes. I would dissolve them all and then reestablish what makes sense. The PTA president might make more sense to attend a board meeting, I don't think the mayor of the village is going to attend a board meeting. So scratch my motion, and then make one, come on, you're new. Make one to
She's second at the table. Chris made a motion to examine these one by one, and let me know if I misunderstood, after goal setting.
Can we make, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure the clerk has these two issues for the goal-setting meeting.
Well, I was just said to scrap dissolve liaison on the board, right? I had, Stephanie had motioned.
No, I got scratched on.
Yeah, there was not a second on that.
I corrected myself.
So Chris made a motion that we revisit the liaison assignments after a goal setting.
Yeah, we just table it till after.
Yep. We table it till after goal setting, that was seconded by January.
Discussion?
Discussion.
The mayor of the village of Sag Harbor is certainly welcome at our meetings. Sandra?
I'm not trying to be difficult. So I'm going to start with that. But I do, I just feel like we're, and while some of it makes sense to push off till after, I'm just also cognizant that whatever we can also get done, because I worry about too much getting pushed down the pike. So is there anything that we can review on this list and figure out now? Like, you know, Katie's suggestion, and that made sense to everybody, so maybe we can take those two off, maybe we can go through, so in other words, I guess I'm sort of saying, can we at least scrap it with some of us now, so we can get something done?
Well, Mash Park has their, has their July meeting next Wednesday, so we should identify who's going to do the Mash Park one. So whoever raised their hand, I think that's the board.
And community coalition, I've really enjoyed serving on that, and I'm happy to continue to do that. However, I would just say I've never kind of understood, I mean, whoever it is, what the purpose is, I mean, just, I'm very interested in those issues, and I know a little bit about them, so, you know, I find it helpful, interesting, but, you know, Katie's often there, or another administrator, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of presence, so, you know, I don't know, I'm sort of torn. But it's also helpful to know about that and bring certain things back, so that's just that one.
Discussion?
I just think there's a motion to table it till we can discuss all these things together, and I think that makes sense.
I just want to ask, who will be representing the board at the Mash Park meeting next week?
Well, let's finish with the motion on the floor, and then we can do that one. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of tabling whether we should, which liaisons we should dissolve till after goal setting, raise your hand. When is the next meeting, Chris?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Next Wednesday.
That'll be before our goal setting.
Yes.
There is an audit meeting from 6:00 to 7:30.
Next Wednesday.
I'm just drawing it out there. Jennifer, am I correct? On the 19th, which is next Wednesday. Or all the week? 12.
No, it's two weeks.
I apologize.
So would you guys be willing to let me know which liaisons, and then if we end up dissolving them, that's fine, and committee assignments, if anybody else wants to do the park board, and I know Chris has been doing it, it is a bit of a time commitment, but if anybody else is willing?
I'm happy to continue, but if someone else wants to do it, I'm happy to give them a high five and let them go. I've enjoyed it, but it is time to zoom.
It is. All right. Okay, so then wellness policy review, we did, correct? Can we let the, can we post that draft of the policy somewhere so that if the public wants to come in and have public input
Yep.
On that, they have an opportunity to read?
Can I throw out another sort of old business item?
Yep.
Is that
Yep, now is the perfect time.
Okay, so it's come up on a number of occasions about the issue of public input one and public input two, and, you know, I think that, we had a couple meetings ago, that there were some people who came in, and you asked if they want to speak, and you said they can speak at anything, because we all sort of said, let's try to make this more flexible. Nobody did speak, but, you know, so I guess I just want to throw out, is do we want to make our practice a little more flexible? Personally, I wouldn't say to go off the reservation and say that we end up, you know, because I know that some people might say, oh, there's hardly anybody ever come to these, but I have lived through, as I know many others have, this school district, but that's not the case, and something's going on, and we're in a negotiation, and we have a packed room, and if you have too many of that, you can have a problem getting your work done. But certainly, I think there's been an interest to make it more flexible, they don't have to sign up, it doesn't have to be an agenda item, we can, or at least, at least that we can be flexible in the will of the board, or, you know, have some kind of cap, so that people can come in at the beginning and speak as well, I mean, a little more flexibly.
What do you suggest? Can you be more specific? Like, what do you suggest? Make a motion.
Well, just, okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that, I mean, I was hoping there'd be a little more discussion.
I'll make
There'll be discussion. You want to make a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I want, I'd like to make a motion that we go off the reservation. I think it's terrible to watch parents and teachers and other community members have to come here and sit for two hours in order to speak. Oftentimes, they leave sometimes more than two hours before they even get a chance to speak. So I'd like to make a motion that we change the rules so that anyone can speak at public input one, doesn't matter if it's an agenda item, doesn't matter if you signed up, and we change the time limit to three minutes. We'll have the opportunity, if down the road it becomes a problem where all of a sudden hundreds of people are showing up at meetings and speaking for hours, we can readdress it, but I think, I'd like to make a motion that we change those rules, as I just suggested.
So that's what I was mentioning, as in terms of going, not having to sign up, you know, almost everything, but I would just like to add, I'd like to second with a friendly amendment that we do just cap that time, because it is the, you'll see, I think we just cap it so that we are able to also get our business sense of like 20 minutes, so if it goes beyond 20 minutes, we just do finish our meeting, and then people have to wait. Because I really think you're
I don't want any amendments, do mine.
Good, and I, and I'm going to insist on seconding that.
Hang on, so there was a motion on the floor to open a public input one to be treated more like public input two, with the time limit per person is three minutes.
Down from five.
Down from five. Is there a second on that motion?
I insist on seconding that.
There's a motion to make an amendment to the motion on the floor that we limit public
I did raise this issue, people.
Limit public input one to 20 minutes.
But all the restrictions would be off.
Right, the amendment is, we limit public input one to 20 minutes.
I don't, I don't think there's an amendment that needs to be followed under Robert's rules, we can always change it at that moment. If we see there's 100 people in here, there's no reason someone on the floor cannot make that motion to table the public until later.
Right, but that
May not be very popular.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a very difficult, I think that would be a very difficult scenario, and especially in the past, when there's been certain negotiations going on, when things have gotten heated, that would be extremely difficult. So I think to have some limitation, some limits, so that we can actually make sure we get to our work, and then if they want to, do you say, in other words, a lot of people would still be able to get in there.
If there's 100 people here, there's probably something going on.
Well, the, the, I hear both sides, I kind of agree with both sides, I think 20 minutes is too short, but I do think that if we have two hours of people getting up and speaking, because there are people that will come up a second, third, and fourth time, will happen. And I want to hear from people, trust me. Hold on, I was one that, was on the committee to say, let's videotape, and let's do it all the time, and I don't want the camera turned off. But, but the, but the primary reason why we are here is to do the business of the board, which is to get through the agenda. My concern is, if we have 90 minutes of people, we usually don't start till 7:30. If we have 90 minutes of people getting up there, then we're starting to have the agenda covered at nine o'clock at night, and not everybody by 10 o'clock, when we're still talking about a presentation, needing to ask questions, is going to be at their best when we're asked to vote and make decisions. And, and we don't, it will make meetings longer to some extent, and we also have, you know, our, you know, our staff here that is, you know, needs to commute and get here early as well. I want to respect everybody, so I, I don't want to be tasked with making decisions much later than we're making them now. I mean, we didn't have public input one here, we started an hour earlier than usual, and it's a quarter to nine. Had we started at 7:30, it'd be a quarter to 10, and we didn't have input one. So that's my concern. I want to hear from people, I also want to make really sound-good decisions. So I would suggest having it capped at 30 minutes, just because otherwise, we're going to be voting at 10, 10:30, 11 o'clock, and that's going to be hard for people, so.
So that sounds like she'll second it if you're willing to go to 30. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
You okay with 30 now? Okay, so the amendment is that we cap it at 30 minutes? Any other discussion on the amendment?
Yes. If, if there are, if there's that many people here, we need to hear from them. And we may have to put our meeting over to another night, our agenda over. If, if we've got 100 people here, and they want to speak to us, we need to accommodate the public, that's, that's my position. But, you know, it's my point on discussion.
All right, any other discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, I think if, the concern is that this is going to make this run late perhaps, that will encourage us to be more concise in our comments, and more efficient with our time. I think if 100 people show up, there's going to be a reason for that, and we should hear from them, and we will be open to revisit this if all of a sudden this leads to, we think, too many people coming in and talking. So I would oppose the amendment.
Hold on, one clarification, we, the board does hear from them, so
They hear from them if they want to wait here until 11 o'clock at night.
At 11 o'clock at night.
We're talking against a compromise, a vote, so you're still having time where people can talk, or can still get the business done, and there's been plenty of meetings on both sides, where, that have gone extremely, extremely late because of the number of people. And I completely agree that, of course, we want to hear from folks, we hear from folks, I've listened to folks at the beach, I've listened to them in the grocery store, I, you know, we all hear from them all the time, which appreciate, that's why we're here. And we, of course, want to hear from them more, which is why we want to be more flexible. But I, I think that, and we would hear, but it's, it would be a concern, I think, to then literally, we basically lost our
These meetings go too late, it's not because of the public, it's because we spend too much time talking about things. I'll just tell you that I, in my practice, I go to board meetings all over the East End, they're much shorter than this, and much more business is accomplished, and so I think another thing we can all look at is how to shorten these meetings, so these folks don't have to sit here until 10 o'clock at night. But I think that watching parents come in here, and leave in disgust after an hour and a half, because they didn't get a chance to speak, is unacceptable, and I don't think there should be a cap on this, and I think the meetings should be shortened, but not at the expense of the public, but the expense of us being more efficient in what we do.
One other point?
You go ahead.
If we were to have 100 people, 150 people, we would have to change our venue, under New York State Open Meetings Law, we would have to go to the auditorium and accommodate those folks, so that they could see the public, the meeting of the Board of Education in public. So I think, you know, there certainly is a spirit for public input and public participation in our meetings.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
I've lost track of where we are.
I'm going to call to vote the amendment at capping the public input one. All those in favor of capping public input one to 30 minutes?
Yeah, but we're gonna
Two? All those opposed to capping public input one to 30 minutes? Back to the original motion, having public input one, you don't have to sign up, agenda and non-agenda items, no longer than three minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is that for input one, or input one and input two?
We haven't, we're not making any changes to We're just changing one. Yep. Are there any other items for discussion that the board members would like to bring up at this time?
Yeah, nice motion, an amended motion. Sounds great.
On that note, I, I do not have a motion, I have a point of order with regards to Robert's Rules of Order and enforcing parliamentary procedure. I prepared a memo for everyone, a little sheet, and I'm glad to see I have this, because I kind of know that very well. So I'm going to read the first portion of the memo into the record, just for preservation, and the rest can be handed out to the public as well.
We get, I think we need one more.
Oh.
Actually, two more.
Do you have, do you have an extra one, two to give to Victoria, since she's
Oh, did you, you have one?
You have it, okay.
Anyone else?
One more this way, January?
Sure.
Another one?
So Policy Number 2120 mandates that the use of Robert Rules of Order Parliamentary Procedure, the newly revised 11th edition, when conducting Board of Meetings. Somewhere along the way, this procedural code has apparently fallen out of use, resulting in runaway meetings that are excessively long, fraught with repetitive and irrelevant information, interruption of speakers, and personal cross-talking that does not belong in a boardroom. The combination of these acts breed board meetings that can lack professional etiquette, and thus be ineffective. Sag Harbor is a school district in the midst of growing pains, tackling numerous issues at once, such as later start times, IB middle years implementation, new wellness policy, staff administration issues, as well as large-scale construction projects of the former Stella Marriage property and school athletic fields. Thus, it's important for our school board to effectively manage and engage in thoughtful discourse, to make sure that Robert Rules of Parliamentary Procedure are adhered to going forward. In order for a school board to effectively manage and engage in thoughtful discourse, these rules of procedure will be enforced going forward. Pursuant to Rule 2120, Robert Rules are the chosen parliamentary authority, and its procedures are binding, with the exception of any specially adopted rules of order, which this board has none. So I prepared this memo to aid the trustees in getting reacquainted with our district's chosen rules of order. There are six main reasons for enforcing the procedural rules governing board member participation: efficiency, focus, equality, I don't realize this one's going to be so long for the record, I'm sorry. Consensus rule allows discussion to lead to a decision reflective of the will of the majority, fairness, and information. Some of the basic rules of debate under Roger's Rules of Order are only one matter may be discussed, and only one speaker can have the floor at once. No board member shall interrupt a speaker who has a floor, and that applies to whether it's a board member, an administrator, or a member of the public, or a contractor. They will have their full time to speak before questions will be asked. The president will recognize a board member before speaking. No board member can speak more than three minutes at a time. No board member may speak to an issue for a second time until all other board members have had the opportunity to speak for the first time. The time for such speaking is to be set by the president or a chair. And these are just options that Robert's Rules gives our president. Additionally, in an effort to create shorter, more effective meetings, I suggest we adopt the seven practices elucidated in this document, tips for shorter, more effective board meetings. One thing we would like to do is insert timed agendas. So we would announce the adjournment time before the meeting, to encourage self-policing of members' comments, of, members' comments, and with a foreseeable end. So we suggest, I suggest adopting a rule of order that no meeting shall be permitted to continue beyond 10:30 without the approval of a majority of the board members who are present eligible to vote. At that point, a new time limit must be established before taking a vote, vote to extend the meeting. In the event that a meeting has not been closed or continued by board vote prior to adjournment time, the items not acted on shall be deferred to the next regular meeting. List starting and end times for each discussion item on the agenda. Set the discussion time prior to starting on lengthy issues. Encourage new discussion, alternate between pros and cons, control interruptions and digressions, and managing conflicts. So attached below to the memo, I have inserted examples of procedures of the specific motions, when to use them, and the instructional chart, and I hope this information aids the board in making a clean adjustment to a new, more organized, and efficient Board of Education. So attach our definition and examples of the motions that we should be using, and a handy little chart. And I suggest that we discuss this at the goals as well.
Great.
Thank you very much.
I move to adjourn.
Is this a motion, or is this?
No, 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 she's
It's just kind of a point of order?
Just bringing in point of order.
Yeah, Robert's Rules is absolutely a beautiful system, it's one of our tenets of democracy, you know, a way to keep meetings in order, meetings that are seven members or 150 members, they operate under the same rules, so, thank you.
It was already there.
I think actually this would be useful to discuss at our retreat, it has come up before in our retreat, but I think in the context of that, it would be helpful, because a lot of it has to do with these board members, and not everybody's going to be at the goal setting.
Yeah, no, I agree completely, I think this would be a great topic for that. Thank you, January. Well, to Thank you, Jennifer. Any other items for discussion?
I wanted to circle back on the committees and liaisons, just to request that, since we're starting a new year, that we set a goal for getting the meeting minutes up on a timely basis. Some of our committees had meeting minutes that were thorough, we had a committee that had no meeting minutes posted on the site currently, at all, for last year. Or any year previously, there's just no, no meeting minutes at all, and I think, you know, since these are committees of, not just the school board, but the community, and those meeting minutes serve as a way to communicate to the community what they're focused on, to not post it is really keeping the community and other board members in the dark. So I strongly advocate for that decision.
Any other items for discussion?
No, just that, you know, I think we said last year that we wanted to make sure that, whatever the committees are, they get started much sooner than last year, because they were woefully late last year. So that was one of the reasons I was actually pushing to have a sort of, to tackle some more of that discussion tonight, because, I don't know, it'll all get pushed again.
Any other items for discussion?
Oh, just, I don't know if, gosh knows with these new rules, we might not be able to say anything anymore, but the, the new, one of the things that we had also talked about previously, and we should grapple at some point, is the timing of the goals meeting. So one of the things, we talked about nine goes, and a big email went out encouraging tons of members of the community to stay involved, and we see that we have four members of the community here tonight. So the goals meeting last year, only one member of the public came, and I think the challenge is that it's in the summer. And so, so we had talked a little bit about, how can we move that to another time of the year, where more people can be engaged in that, and not just the board members?
What would you suggest?
Well, I don't know if it can be, I mean, I would want to know what the administrators think, what the super things, but I don't know, maybe sometime in the, I mean, it's hard, because the spring is so busy too, but my only issue was that it would be a good time to have more input from the community, it seems like we don't get it, or maybe we still have it in the summer, but having some kind of way to get more feedback from the community to inform it would be helpful.
And we are setting goals prior to getting our data. We don't have, we set goals around, you know, if we are making, a lot of our goals have been very facilities-heavy, but I feel like, you know, even though we're deep in facilities, right now, we set goals prior to getting our IB, our 3-3, a lot of the curriculum pieces that are near and dear to, I know myself and our administrators hearts. So we're setting goals before we've gotten those big rocks back.
When, when do you think we're to get a deal?
I don't know, you know, it's something I'd really want to bring to our cabinet, but there's, there's so many times that, you know, we want to have initiatives to start the school year, but you, we've literally just finished. It just feels like we haven't, you have to reflect, you have to have some time, all of us finished the school year and came screaming, like, I just finished with Stay Dead last week, and that's the only time they could find to meet with, the school superintendents, because the school superintendents need time to go back to their cabinets and talk and meet. So I don't have an ideal time, and I really want the thoughts of my cabinet and, and this Board of Education, but I know this has been a tradition in Sag Harbor to do it this soon, but I, I gotta tell you, we don't, we haven't had time to catch our breath, or to look at our data, to have our data come back, which comes back in the end of August. So, and that's important, that tells us a lot.
So are we making a motion to?
We can't change the goals meeting this year, but I think that part of our discussion at the goals meeting should be, is this an appropriate time, and if not, next year, let's pick a time that's more appropriate.
And it'd be helpful, if that's going to be teed up, to come with some information about best practices and how other districts do it. You know, are there other districts that can successfully set goals two months later than we do and still get enough done? I know, we didn't approve the goals this year until, I think it was late October, which, I think it was late October, which was really late, so I would just like to see them adopt, adopted earlier, after that goals meeting, we can't have 60 days or 90 days in between.
Well, I think part of the delay was that some people were very tied into the exact language of the goals, and so even though we had decided, like, big picture, this is, these are what our goals, our people wanted to wordsmith and edit, and, you know, this, and then that's kind of what drug it on, because we, we knew what the goals were, and we came out of the goals meeting, we just didn't adopt them until later.
So at the goals meeting, let's set a due date for when they need to be finalized.
Sounds good.
So it doesn't take too long.
Sounds good.
And I do have a little bit of homework I provided for the board, these are just a tickler list of some of the developing things that are on for the Board of Education for the building level, and our last three years of goals that we've had, just for you to look at, this is not perfectly wordsmithed, as we talked about. This is just a, like, running stream list from what the administrators have brought our
So this is like prep for goal meeting?
This is, but this is really early prep, this is just almost a stream of consciousness, and also what we just know we have just running through our list. So again, it's, it's board level and building level, and then it has the last three years of goals that we've had.
Later start, later start, later start.
That's in there.
Any other items for discussion for tonight? All right, public input two.
Sure. Everyone?
You know the rules, right Larry?
I know the rules. My name is Larry Baltz. Welcome to our newly formed board. Congratulations to everyone, thank you to all our existing members, and, or I, what's the right word, the members who have come back, and welcome to our new members, congratulations to our new president, vice president. And I just want to say, wow, thanks, this was a very exciting meeting, to me, as a guy who sits here occasionally and watches every single videotape, it felt good tonight. So I know it's not a Q and A, and I don't know what Robert says about this, but you guys did move the start time 15 minutes, right?
Yes, we did.
You did?
Yes.
Thank you.
7:50.
That was very anticlimactic, I mean, you know, that was a long time getting to that 15 minutes.
About those kids that play sports.
Well, I want to thank everyone for, for this, and yeah, I'm looking forward to public input one, and, and, you know, I'm going to rally my 99 friends, and we'll be here every week, just so you guys know. True, Baltz, screen's been wrong. That's really all I have to say, thanks. Good job, guys. Larry, last name Baltz, B-A-L-T-Z, B as in boy.
Hi, everybody, I'm Kate Lawton. So you did change the start times. And what are the times, is it 7:50 for Pearson?
Yes.
To 2:51. Okay, so you met your goal, which you set Well, right, but you did, you did, sort of, so that was the goal you set up last year at about this time, is that right? Or is it two years? Or was it like five years ago? Okay.
So
Okay, so I want to just be clear, that we are not making academic support voluntary in any way for any of our students, it's really important to me, because it's a slippery slope, if we excuse some and we don't excuse others. It's a very slippery slope, especially for our IB kids, that are going to have to work really hard to keep their grades up and play sports. I'm very concerned about that. And then, for the record, there hasn't been a shared decision-making committee in a while. And I feel like that's a committee that we're supposed to have in our district, and so I heard, the only reason I'm bringing it up is I heard it three times earlier, when they were presenting on wellness, and there was, somebody said something about a shared decision-making committee, and I had the privilege of serving on it a while back, and it was really, it was lovely, it was great, I learned a lot, I learned how things worked, the teachers worked very hard on it, Jeff was good on it, and really informative. I think it's a committee we need to have. So, thank you. When are you going to tell everybody about the shared, just the, the late start times?
That covers
Right, silly me, okay, right, great, thank you.
Okay, the new vice president over here, you're better at rules than I am. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Ken.
Hi, how are you? Actually, I wasn't planning on speaking, but since I'm here, what the hell. Wanted to say, first of all, what a great board this is, I know all of you, and it's a really a great group of people, and I'm really excited about this board, I came to get more involved. Other thing is, audit committee, gee, I have an MBA, and maybe I could be seduced to be on the audit committee.